Good evening. I'd like to call to order a public hearing for the city of Urbana, for the Urbana City Council. This is a public hearing to approve a proposed property tax increase for the city of Urbana for 2022, which will be held on December 5th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. Any person desiring to appear at the public hearing and present testimony is welcome to do so, or send it in to city clerk Phyllis Clark. The corporate and special purpose property taxes extended or abated for 2021 were $8,428,252.2. The proposed corporate and special service property taxes to be levied for 2022 are $9,415,492.48. This represents an 11.71% increase over the previous year. The property taxes extended for debt service and public building commission leases for 2021 were $0.00. The estimated property taxes to be levied for debt service and public building commission leases for 2022 are $0.00. This represents a 0% increase over the previous year. Total property taxes extended or abated for 2021 were $8,428,252.2. Estimated total property taxes to be levied for 2022 are $9,415,492.48. This represents an 11.71% increase over the previous year. And for the public information, this also represents the city is not increasing the property tax rate for this coming year. Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hersi?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilken?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Next item is public input. Does anyone wish to address the speak during this public hearing before the Urbana City Council? Seeing none, this hearing is closed and we will be adjourned. This will be followed immediately by the regular committee of the whole meeting chaired by Jaya Colacetti.
Good evening. I'd like to call the this meeting of the Urbana City Council Committee of the Whole to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hersi?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilken?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
All right, the first item is approval of the minutes from the previous meetings, which were on November 14th, 2022. Those special meeting and 11/21/2022 are normal meeting. Names that were misspelled and other errors that have been previously submitted have been corrected already. Are there any substantive corrections?
I'll move approval of the minutes.
Moved by Chandra. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Sharice. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Next is additions to the agenda. We have none. Then we have presentations and public input. Don't believe we have any presentations. If anyone would like to address the Urbana City Council Committee of the Whole, please feel free to step up to the microphone. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to staff reports. And the first is a youth services grant update.
Good evening, everyone. So tonight I will be presenting on the city's youth services grant program for fiscal year 2023-2024. So I'll be starting with an overview of some of the accomplishments from the prior fiscal year 2021-2022. I'll then be going into the program budget and overview for the 2023-2024 fiscal year. And that'll include a discussion of the scoring process that we will use for applications that we receive. And then I will also be discussing briefly the timeline for this grant competition. So in 2021-2022, we committed $100,000 to youth services programming, and that went to local, public, or private nonprofit agencies that support youth services programming in the community. The city's funds served 340 unduplicated Urbana youth during that year. 54% of those served were from very low to extremely low households. 97% of those served were BIPOC youth, and 62% were from households with a female head of household. And then, as you can see there, 66% of the agencies that we funded had a majority BIPOC leadership, whether in staff or in their board makeup. One-third of the agencies that we funded had fewer than 10 employees or volunteers. And then it was a total of 250 hours of city staff time to manage this program throughout the year. So this is all data that we gathered throughout the grant year from the agencies that we funded. So we're really proud of the work that they were able to accomplish with this funding. So I'm just going to show some pictures really quick of some of the programs that we funded, just to show really the impact that this money is having on the community. So these photos are from The Well Experience, which is an agency down on Philo Road. They run programming for youth throughout the summer, but then also throughout the year. So you can see here some of the programs that they were able to operate with our funding. And then these photos are from Steam Genius, Hip Hop Express. They have a community center in Lincoln Square Mall where they run a variety of after-school programs for Urbana youth. So now I'll look forward to the 2023-2024 program year. The awards will start July 1, 2023, and they will run through June 30, 2024. These funds will support programs that provide services to pre-K through youth 22 years of age. And any award that the city executes with an agency will have to come before all of you for ultimate approval before we're able to execute those agreements. So this is the same as it was last year. The youth services grant program focuses on three service areas: health, well-being, and opportunity. And again, these are kind of broader categories to help guide applicants through the process. So opportunity could be anything, you know, from after-school, job training programs, skill training programs. Well-being could be recreational opportunities, after-school programming. And then health could be things such as mentoring opportunities, or violence prevention, or trauma-informed care programs as well. So again, those are kind of the large themes that this program is designed to fund. So the budget for 2023-2024, I just want to first say that this is very preliminary. So this will be subject to change pending council approval, and also ultimate HUD approval as well. But what we're looking at right now is a total funding pot of around $300,000. $100,000 of that comes from the city. So traditionally, in the past, the city has provided $75,000 in city general funds, combined with $25,000 in community development block grant funding to round it out to $100,000. But we're also very excited that we received a violence prevention grant from the Illinois Department of Human Services that was specifically to target youth programming and violence prevention. And so staff decided to roll that into kind of the total pot of funding to bring it to that $300,000. So that's where we are right now, again, that pending council guidance that could change. So the process is overseen by a youth grant committee. This committee is made up of city council members, members of our Community Development Commission, as well as city staff. And the committee had their first meeting last week, and will be meeting periodically throughout the process. And the purpose of the committee is to provide direction and feedback to staff. And then, once the application process has finished, to review applications that have been submitted, to score the applications, and then to ultimately provide their funding recommendations to city council. So it'll be a very collaborative process with staff, as well as city council members and members of the Community Development Commission. So this is our draft scoring tool. So the committee will be, as I said, once the application period has come to an end and we've received applications for this program. This is a draft of the tool that the committee will be using to score and to rank the applications that we've received. This looks similar to the tools we've used in past years. There have been some changes, as you can see there. This is just preliminary. So again, as the committee kind of works through this, this could change. But throughout the process, the tool is always made available to the public during the open application period. So once we launch the grant applications, this tool, in whatever form it ends up in, will be made public, so that anyone who's applying will have access to it, can look at it, and can see how the committee will be scoring their application. Generally speaking, the tool is designed to evaluate different aspects of an agency's preparedness to successfully run a program, you know, the experience they might have had in the past, successfully managing grant funds. It's a total of 20 points cumulatively, so you can score kind of anywhere along that range. And again, it's just to help guide the committee in their decision on which agencies to ultimately fund, and how much funding to give them. So there are some proposed changes to the program this year, based on feedback that we got from you all, and also from our Community Development Commission members as well. It was great feedback that was really aimed at making the entire process more equitable and less of a barrier for smaller agencies that maybe hadn't been able to apply for funding in the past. So the first change is that we are going to have a two-month open application period. And I'll get into more detail on that in a minute in the timeline section. Traditionally, in the past, we would have one month from launching the grant program to closing the portal, so that they would have that one month to apply. We've extended that to two months, again, just to provide agencies more time to work through their applications, more time to get their proposals in order before submitting them. The second change is that we added an additional application assistance workshop. That's something we've always done, an applicant assistance workshop, where, you know, whether in person or via Zoom, we invite people who are interested in applying, agencies that might want to submit an application, to come, ask questions, get feedback, kind of guide them through the process. But we received some guidance that it would be beneficial to have more of that, more help, especially, again, for those smaller agencies. So the way that we're intending to structure this is that when we launch the grant program, we'll have kind of an initial workshop at the beginning of the process to kind of lay it out, explain how it's going to work, what we're looking for. And then later on, closer to the deadline, have a second session where agencies that might have any concerns, or maybe if some last-minute things come up, they can come back to us and get some assistance and get some additional information. And then the third is an application training video, which will be hosted on our website. And that would be just a pretty basic video that walks through the basics of the program, how to apply, how to use our neighborly software, you know, just kind of something easy that applicants can watch on their own time if they have some questions, or maybe if they're unfamiliar with how to apply. So the timeline. So this is all estimated. If I get my way, this is how it'll go, but, you know, timelines can be unpredictable. The idea, again, is to have that two-month open application period, again, to provide plenty of time and opportunity for agencies to get their applications completed. So the tentative date to launch this program would be January 30, and then it would be open until March 31, 2023. So again, roughly two months of an open application period. And then, as I mentioned, those two application assistance workshops, we would have one on or around February 3, again, early in the process, right as we launch it. And then a second follow-up workshop later on, about a week before the deadline, just in case agencies have any last-minute questions or concerns that come up and that they want to have, that they want to discuss with the committee. So once the application closes at the end of March, there will be about a week where the applications will be evaluated and scored by that committee that I mentioned. The committee will then be coming up with their recommendations for which agencies to fund and how much to fund them at. And then those recommendations would go to the city's Community Development Commission, where they would essentially approve them, or provide the committee with further direction. And then, once the Community Development Commission would approve that, it would get forwarded to city council for approval. We're hoping, I mean, April 24 is just a target, but we were hoping that it would be toward the end of April. And then again, once that process gets tied up, we would be able to execute agreements with agencies on July 1, 2023. So that's what I have for my slides, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Chris?
Yeah. Thank you for the presentation. Remind me again, and you've probably told me, and I'm just forgetting, but who's on the committee?
Yes, so the committee this year is a little bit different than it was last year. So council member Wu and Wilken are on the committee. DeShawn Williams, who is a member of our Community Development Commission, is on the committee as well, and then Sheila Dada, myself.
Okay, sounds good to me. What about last year's winners? Do they get notified about the application process, and are they still eligible for further funding?
Yes, absolutely. They're still eligible. And I have kind of a master list of all agencies that have applied, not just received funding, but also applied in the past, different social service agencies or listservs. So that will get blasted out to everyone, you know, when we're getting close to launching it, just so that every agency that might be eligible can submit an application.
Thank you.
Chandra?
Hi, Brayden. Thank you for this. I like the timeline. I'm just wondering about only having a week between that second assistance workshop and the application being submitted? If people, you know, I don't know, come in with major problems, I'm not sure if, like, a week is enough to, like, really maybe do some major changes in their application. But hopefully, they've been talking to you guys over the course, but maybe like 10 days instead of a week? That's just my suggestion. Thank you.
Sharice?
Yeah. What is BIPOC?
So that stands for Black or Indigenous People of Color. So it's kind of an umbrella term for different minority groups in the community.
Uh huh. Okay. And also regarding the well-being, what kind of services? And you kind of answered health, and, you know, mentoring, violence prevention, and you mentioned opportunity, after-school, job training, skill training, and so on and so forth. What falls under well-being? Would that be therapy, or something to that?
Yeah, thank you for that. I wasn't looking at my notes, so I forgot to mention that. So thank you for that question. So under the category of well-being would be programs that offer violence prevention services, recreational, you know, after-school services, educational programming, or mentoring programs. Health, we have healthcare, mental health resources, or trauma support programs. And then again, opportunity was, you know, workforce development or different job training opportunities for youth.
So with the health, you said there are mental health services? Is that what you said?
Uh huh.
And wouldn't that also fall under well-being too?
We have it under health. It's mostly just in the application to give kind of a visualization of the different categories that we're looking for. So it's kind of a general term. That's how we have it structured. When an applicant is completing their application, they like click boxes for which categories their program is addressing. So it's very possible that an application will be checking a lot of different boxes from different categories, which is great. We like to see that. So it's more of just a helpful kind of framing for, as the applicant is going through, just to tell us, okay, well, what needs in the community are you addressing? So that we can kind of think about gaps that we see in services, or kind of see where the program will fit in.
Okay, and one more question. Okay, so during the time that people are filling out the applications, because I really don't want folks getting confused, they can also do the workshops and get back to you or keep in touch with you regarding what parts of the applications. As a matter of fact, I get the feeling that the more communication that you have with folks that are applying, the better.
Yes, absolutely. And in addition to that communication, which will be, you know, they can attend, we will definitely encourage them to attend both sessions. That's not going to be required, but that'll be up to them. But in addition to email, phone, you know, responses, we'll also host a frequently asked questions page on our website, where we'll just track every question that has been asked. You know, we'll do it anonymously, but just so that everyone has access to the same information for what questions are being asked. So that'll all be posted publicly, so everyone can see that as well, just so that there's that open communication.
So would it be safe to say then it is probably best when people are applying for these grants, that they go to, they do both workshops? And any questions that they have, feel free to email you guys, or call, or whatever?
Absolutely. They can also come into the office as well. We always make all of those options available.
Okay. Thank you.
Grace?
Thanks. Thanks for the presentation and all the work going into this. I also really appreciate acting on some of the lessons learned from last year and some feedback. I think that's great, how we've expanded it even more. I think you already clarified some of my points that Sharice was asking about the key service areas. And it sounds like they're not too narrow, that things can fit into all sorts of aspects under those.
Yes.
And then my remaining question was just about the scoring, if the questions will match the scoring, you know, kind of asking people specifically, how have you leveraged funds or past grant experience, rather than just tell us your narrative, and they might not think to include that?
Yes, thank you. That's a great question. So yes, so the scoring tool is based on the questions that are asked in the application. So again, you know, it ties together. And that's not just for the ease of the applicant, but also for the ease of the people scoring, so we can go and look, oh, how did they answer this question? So we tie it together, so it's clear. And then again, I always, whenever we open this process, I always tell applicants, go look at the tool, look at the application. It's, you know, the scoring tool is what we're going to be looking at. So those key questions in the application, make sure you're really providing that detail. So yeah, it does tie together that way.
Thank you.
Chandra?
I had a question about the IDHS funding. Are there any specific stipulations or, like, guidance around that, the way the money has to be used? And does that sort of mesh with what community development usually does with funds? I'm just curious.
It does. I don't know off the top of my head too many of the details of this grant. I haven't worked with it previously, but I guess Sheila could maybe answer more of that detail.
And does it have, like, the same execution dates? Like, does it have to be spent by a certain time, and it falls within that year timeframe?
Right. It actually came from DCEO. We got $2 million allocated to us. And it was pretty broad, community development and violence prevention programs. And so council approved acceptance in the budget for that grant, I believe, in October. But we decided, just for consistency, and maybe, you know, the best use of our dollars, to include that $200,000 in this. The deadline that we put on using it is the same as this, June 30, 2024.
Okay. All right, cool. Thank you.
Any other questions for Sheila or Brayden? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we do have another staff report, update on UPTV issues and coming upgrades. Sanford.
There we go. Thank you, Breem. We were going to do the work in two phases, we talked about in August. And the first phase did happen in September. That was the video equipment that went in. As I noted in the memo, the video equipment is more behind-the-scenes stuff. So the TV broadcast, for example, didn't change at all. What did change, though, was the ability for us to do live streaming in high definition. So that was probably the only visible note that people would see that's changed from the September work. We are happy with the changes behind the scenes, but it's more about replacing equipment with slightly easier-to-use equipment. The web stream took us a few weeks to get sorted out. And for those of you who have experience with using new technology, you know that there's always a process, especially when you've got multiple different things that have to interoperate. So we started it on October 24, and of course, the first time we had issues. And the first thing that we learned about was a challenge. We used to use a live streaming service that was actually called Livestream. And Livestream has been used for UPTV for several years. Livestream was purchased by the company called Vimeo. And so now it's rebranded as Vimeo Livestream. We had discussions with them about changing the signal to use our new equipment, and they said, well, actually, Livestream is being phased out, and instead, you should just use our new Vimeo service. So we signed up for that. And the good news is that it does work, and it looks great. The bad news is that it's limited to 12 hours a day of streaming. So we didn't know about that on the first day, and that was why we timed out. And it timed out just before the meeting, and we didn't, we had multiple people calling in, we had the timeout going on. So we fell back to the old method for that meeting. After that, as noted in the memo, I personally, and I take responsibility for this decision, I've removed the old equipment, because I didn't want us to fall back on the old ways. I wanted us to move forward. So what happened was, we next had an issue on November 14. And that one was a different issue. We were streaming away happily, and then the signal just cut out. It was about 40 minutes into the township meeting, and we were not able to get it restarted during the meeting, and so we did not livestream for the rest of November 14. After that meeting, the next day, we met and started trying to diagnose the issue. We brought in the vendor that we've been using for this work. They remoted in, we looked at logs. The best we could determine is that the signal from one piece of equipment stopped going to the other piece of equipment, and then it just dropped. So what we're trying to look into is why that happened. There was no definitive answer, but working with the vendor, we made some adjustments. And I mentioned here the bitrate and things like that. So we're trying to figure out how to make that more stable. It has been fairly stable since then, but it also has gone off a few times since then. So we're still trying to debug that issue. We've been keeping a closer eye on it, but we still have that 12-hour limit. So we've been starting the stream about noon and running it till about midnight, because particularly in terms of meetings, the meetings exclusively happen afternoon and before midnight. So there are other, the UPTV is not live streaming 24/7 like we used to. I have been in discussions with Vimeo about doing that. Unfortunately, the pricing that I've gotten so far would raise our yearly rate from $660 to $10,000. So I'm still trying to get them to explain to me the difference in those rates. Finally, the Phase 2 work, which is going to include changing how we carry the audio signal from these microphones that I forgot to turn on at the beginning. That is going to be hopefully happening at the end of this month. I'm still waiting on confirmation for scheduling. There's a couple of balls in the air, but I think it's going to work well. The week between Christmas and New Year's looks pretty good. One piece of our equipment will still not be available. It is a touchscreen control panel, but we will be able to use alternate controls in the interim, and that might arrive sometime February or March. So shipping delays and everything else have continued to plague this process, but we are making slow but steady progress. Sorry. So that is my update, and I'm happy to answer questions about it. Sharice?
Sharice.
Have we shopped around for different streaming people? Or is Vimeo the only ones, or do they have? Do they have a monopoly on that market?
There are other streaming services, and I've looked into a few. For example, YouTube is one. They also have a 12-hour limit, but it doesn't have the investment. We've already got Vimeo working, so I'm trying to go down that path first, but there are other options.
Okay, so, we're not opposed to using other, I mean, there are other choices that we have?
There are other choices that we have.
Okay.
Grace?
Thanks. Thanks for the updates. I appreciate that, because I feel completely at a loss when people contact me about sound and city IT issues. I can barely operate my own devices and don't understand any of that, so I appreciate the update for everyone to know the situation. A few questions. I was wondering, what is your, what do you recommend the public do for that? Because it's hard for me, you know, when we don't watch the live streams, because we're here in person. Is there, like, an IT email or number that's best, or how, if you would like people to contact about that?
Well, if there are problems with the stream, they can contact us at uptv@urbanaillinois.us. So, but usually, we're aware of the issues. We're not, I mean, there could be a situation where we are not aware of it, but certainly, ever since we've been having these issues, we monitor the stream back there in the other room while they're also dealing with all the other things. So, yeah, usually, we're aware. It's just not always easy to fix, especially during a meeting, without being disruptive to the meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
And I would always encourage people to realize that, you know, the TV signal is, you know, that's our primary method of distribution. Livestreaming is just as simple. It's a nice add-on.
And you mean, we're still on, like, local television, even when the live stream's out?
Yeah. Yeah, they're totally different streams. Portraits of words. They're totally different vehicles of getting the signal out, completely separate.
Okay, but not online? Like, that's through cable television? Is that right? Or you can get the local TV online?
Yeah, it's cable television, or I-3, or whoever your, you know, your home television signal is.
Okay.
I think we're on the Dish Network, I think.
Again, going...
Direct TV, I know that.
Yeah.
Starting to go over my head there. But a few, another question or two was about our legal obligations for streaming. If you knew or anyone else offhand, or a follow-up, like, is that part of OMA, and are we still good if it's on TV? I guess I'm just not sure what our obligations are for live sharing of the meeting.
I would have to ask for a legal opinion on that as well.
Okay. Makes sense. And then, a quick note. It looks like maybe you also were making notes of this back here, but it looks to me like the feed from the projector was not as clear as when we can do it off the computers. I don't know if that's coming back.
Five minutes before the meeting, I was informed that the software that projects the image from this laptop to the process wasn't working. So, we tried the reboot. Didn't come up either. Don't have enough time to debug it. We'll have to address it tomorrow. So, what they did is they redirected one of the cameras up here to actually just show the screen. It looked decent. Wasn't great, but it looked decent. So, you know, kudos to the team back there for coming up with a Plan B very quickly.
Yeah, absolutely. Understandable, good problem solving. Just making sure that that wasn't the plan going forward. That was just a tonight fluke.
Yep.
Thank you.
James?
All right. Thank you. Thank you for your team's diligence on this. I know these problems can be hairy to work with, but I do want to say, as one of the city council members who has occasionally had to participate by phone, like Mary Alice this evening, thank you for getting rid of the echo, because that was just not working. And so, at least that is a possibility now for council members that have to attend remotely, and I greatly appreciate it.
That is the one thing that will probably improve the most when we get the new audio equipment in, because right now, we're constrained by how many inputs we have and the janky way we've got it all hooked up. So, I look forward to it being digital and much more clean and easy to manage. But, yeah, it's, a TV station is, you know, it's a thing to deal with, and it is always causing issues and having problems. And I really am thrilled with the way everybody on our team has stepped in, including some of the members from the IT team have been supporting UP-TV more than we have in the past. So, particular shout-out to Carlos and Ibrahim for all the work that they've done to get things where they are. It's a never-ending process.
Any other questions? Thank you so much for the update.
Okay. I'm going to hang out right here, because I think I have the next item as well.
All right. Well, the next item, so we've got new business ordinance number 2022-12-049, an ordinance to approve an amended IGA for the Champaign County GIS Consortium, adding a new member of Village of St. Joseph.
The GIS Consortium is an intergovernmental agreement and is, provides GIS services to different entities across the county. So, the list has slowly grown over time, which is great. The only bummer about that is each time we add a new member, we have to go around and amend the agreement, and we have ordinances and all this stuff. So, in this instance, we are adding St. Joseph. St. Joseph will be joining as a member, and there's a formula, which is actually very well delineated in the memorandum from Leanne Brie O'Briely, the director of the consortium. There's a buy-in process that they have to do to sort of catch up, and then, from this point forward, they pay a share of the costs. So, adding more members just spreads the costs across a greater number of different entities, and does not significantly increase the workload or the expenses of the consortium. It just divides it across more groups.
Any questions? Grace?
Thanks again for information on this one. Seems pretty straightforward. My only question was about the population breakdown. I guess that's the 2000 census.
Right.
But Champaign County is 37,000, and I was imagining that's excluding the cities that are already in the consortium?
I believe so, but also, yes, as you pointed out, that is from the first page of the original agreement from 2003, I believe. So, those numbers are way out of date.
But it's the same base or per capita in this one, do you know?
The formula is more or less the same in terms of dividing it by per capita, but they continue to get the most current populations when they do this.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I move approval ordinance number 2022-12-049, an ordinance to approve an amended IGA for the Champaign County GIS Consortium, adding a new member, Village of St. Joseph.
Second?
Moved by Chandra, and I heard Charisse first, seconded by Charisse. Any further discussion? Is this on, well, never mind, there's only one item. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oh, it's an ordinance. Just kidding. Hold a clerk, please. Call the roll. Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you. Next, we have council input and communication. Any council input or communication? Mayor?
Just a couple, a couple of things. First, again, as a reminder, that beginning next week, the council will be hearing presentations from applicants for the American Rescue Plan Act funding. That'll start on Monday night with the internal applicants, and then Tuesday through Thursday will be community organizations, and each meeting starts at 7:00 PM. And then, I wanted to, on behalf of the city, extend our deepest condolences to the family and friends of Mr. Shawn Green. He passed away this weekend. He was coach, just a beloved member of the community, especially working with kids throughout the community. And he also was serving as a member of our Community Development Commission, and was appointed not too long ago. So, anyway, we just wanted, it was just a shock, his passing, and so we wanted to just express our condolences and sympathy.
Any other communication? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.